Order. You have a forum. I'll take a motion to approve the gentleman's.
With the gentleman.
They right.
Hi.
Oh. Morning, Rich.
Morning.
We have any for you there? If any questions, guys are on play. We got. They're gonna work there next week is. Holiday. Eight hour days. They'll do from six to two thirty, whatever. Next Tuesday, since the holidays Monday, I will be here Tuesday. But as always, available on my phone. Really don't like that for you for secondary rose.
How's that going as far as? The split shift like that.
I don't really know as much.
Yeah, representation.
Yeah, we got people here on Friday. Then like RC and Tom, they're working five weeks, so they're at least here every day. And working well as far as I can tell.
Good. Yeah, anything else for Rich?
Rock, rock's going good, it looks like.
After just started doing that, yeah, I forgot, and they started that northwest corner.
Yep.
Basic started.
See.
Yeah. We got our dirt patcher back, so start doing some dirt patching. We're all back, so we'll get the concrete and we'll get some time here. When the rain lets up, we can get off the gravel and some background. We get that stuff over my ground.
Yeah, keep that away.
I just called RC about it this morning.
Two spots there.
I think we got the signs put up for the, told you didn't have any to talk about, I used to do. Got the signs put up for that, but I'm mad.
Yeah, I saw somebody posted that this morning, I appreciate it, so.
One thing I noticed, we probably posted on the sign that doesn't really matter, you guys, when they come into graphic from the east. Come down to twenty-five miles an hour, I think there's a speed zone ahead sign, so I could look at something.
That's me, Esther.
Yeah. There you go, fifty-five, and you get that twenty-five right there.
It might be okay.
It's a minor thing, but.
I've never paid attention.
As long as the sheriff doesn't pull people over.
Well, I think that you can run a little hop through there till we catch the stop sign, but it's.
Well, I was just, I left it that way so he could make some money, but I never see anybody there.
No, that's all I got. Thank you, sir. Drainage. Standpoints. Motion to approve standpoints. Second, I'll second it. Any discussion of? There are none, oh, favorite, alright, both. Any else with drainage? Regular claims.
Um. They're gonna be, yeah, they're gonna be pending, I'll get the signature next week, but this will be the dollar amount. Oh, okay, I'm just, we gotta wait for. Payroll, the last payroll first.
Okay, which one gets those in though, so we can end this just clear, right?
Yeah.
So need a motion to approve the pending claims.
Oh, I got motion to approve the pending. Oh, second.
Okay, any discussion? All favor I?
Alright.
I, opposed. Russian will carry. Any reports?
No. Oh, one more.
Okay, offense. Yeah, motion to approve payroll claims.
I'm making a motion to approve the payroll.
I'm sorry. Any discussion? All favor I? I propose. Send the reports. Payroll eligibility, your salary changes. What your cigarette license?
Yes, um, I don't have any. You don't sign the cigarette licenses, but we finally got the info on the Joe Stop. So needed approval of the Joe Stop cigarette license.
Motion to approve the Joe Stop cigarette license, I make that motion. Mark, just a second, I'll second it. Any question, comments?
Should be our last one.
All favor I?
Alright.
I, opposed. Russian period, cigarette license. Fireworks request?
Um, CBA.
Last weekend.
You're smiling over there. There was fireworks, there was fireworks somewhere Friday or Saturday night, but I didn't see him, I could hear.
They're legal right now.
Without a permit, though.
Yeah.
During this one.
And does he?
Oh, yeah, it's permitted regardless.
No, not from June first to July eighth.
Okay.
And does he not know the process? Because this came to me through the assessor's office instead of my office.
So he doesn't file the permits out here, it's up to the individuals if they wanna have fireworks, from what I understand. He's, he's told them, he said, if you wanna have fireworks out here, you need a permit. And, I mean, if I didn't understand, I always thought it was, no matter what.
Cause if, if there, if timing was an issue, it was ten days before I got that email, so.
No, it's. Yeah, he just, he's told people, said, you wanna, you wanna have them, you gotta take care of yourself, it's not up to me. Cause they just basically run the boys, so.
Any motion to approve the fireworks for, for country acres?
I will make that motion.
Say it, I'll say it. Any discussion? Favor I?
Alright.
I.
And I don't know where the work is just here, it's, it could have been a neighbor blowing them off all in it. Yeah. Absolutely.
Do or manage with. I just, that was from my seat. Okay, uh, mainly law enforcement agreement. Said Joe Dan.
Did you go?
But I'm tired. Oh.
A question, then I'll make a motion.
I know, Dan.
You guys got it hammered out, so.
Working back and forth for months and.
Yep.
Gotta work, needs to be, so I would take that motion from the work for. The mainly law enforcement agreement, I'll second it. Right, any other discussion on it? There are none, all favor I?
Alright.
I, opposed. Right, Washington, here.
Okay. Holy tuition, yes. Go on in.
Are you smart?
Good, thank you.
Good.
Thanks for getting me on the agenda. Uh, so I'm gonna read it so I don't skip anything. Uh, this is actually, this is contained in the, uh, transmittal that we have this morning. So speaking on behalf of the zoning commission, uh, just a little bit of background, uh, on April twelfth, the, uh, this year, the board of supervisors passed resolution twenty-one point oh four point oh five, which implemented a temporary moratorium on construction of commercial wind energy systems for the purpose of drafting and adopting any necessary and proper revisions to ordinance governing those activities. The zoning commission, having responsibility in the county to review and recommend land use plans and ordinances, took up the work to perform that research and develop recommendations related to this topic. The commission began this work on April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Under the research for the commission's recommendations, the overall goal of research work, uh, by the commission was to develop factual information and understanding of the issues from a broad range of sources, and was focused on ensuring that we had a balance of information and considerations from as many stakeholders as feasible, while at the same time seeking not to founder in research and discussion forever. Uh, the research work undertaken by the commission consumed hundreds of hours and consisted of, uh, number one, comments and considerate, comments and concerns made public during board meetings via petition submitted to the board. Uh, we invited speakers from Invenergy, Worth County Farm Bureau, Worth County Engineer, Worth County Conservation, Worth County Board of Health, and Cosouth County, their neighboring county that, uh, had recently passed a wind specific ordinance. We researched, uh, ordinances in effect from thirty-eight counties across all regions of Iowa, researched commercial wind development issues contained in state and federal agency documents and literature, research of commercial wind development issues contained in peer-reviewed scientific journals. Uh, number six, research of unsolicited documents that was received by the commission, provided by invited speakers or by organizations advocating issues around commercial wind development, and by citizens in and around the county. Uh, I should note that while the commission considered the information pursuant to that number six, those unsolicited items, uh, we did exercise caution to ensure that the information that was considered had an authoritative source, and we tried to steer clear of extreme biases. Uh, number seven was public comment, after consideration of the information developed via initial research described earlier, uh, the commission prepared a draft containing details of a proposed ordinance, and shared that draft for the comment, uh, for comment by the public at large. In addition, we sent copies of the draft for comment to the county attorney, county auditor, county conservation, county engineer, county board of health, North Iowa Area Council of Governments, Farm Bureau, and Invenergy. Subsequent to making the draft public, the commission solicited written response and held a public hearing for verbal comment. Written comments were received from a wide variety of individuals and agencies, some of which were from outside the county and from commercial energy companies, uh, or organizations. Comments ranged from general in nature for or against the proposal, and others provided detailed recommended changes and rationale. The public hearing consisted of at least a hundred and ten persons on site and untold number tuned in at different times via Zoom. During the meeting, the commission heard opinions represented from approximately thirty people. The commission held the meeting open until there was, nobody wanted to speak. Uh, of particular disappointing note, Invenergy declined to comment on the details, uh, on the draft after first stating that they would. Um, instead, the representative at the public hearing stated that since they claimed any ordinance would not apply to them due to their claim vested rights, it would be senseless to comment on the draft, which was rather disappointing that they didn't. Our development of final recommendations, uh, representing today is the culmination of several iterations of content and detail. We went through multiple debates and versions prior to the draft presented for public comment. After receipt of comments, we sorted and categorized each comment so that the commission could consider each of them in context. In other words, every comment specific to a certain topic such as setbacks, for example, we listed together so that the commission could view and consider all of them at the same time. We also received several comments that were in general terms, either supportive or not of the draft, but did not contain specific recommendations. These two were consolidated and considered by the commission as part of our consideration and debate for the changes. The draft today contains a large number of changes as a result of the comments we received in writing and verbally during the public hearing. While we may not have included a specific recommendation submitted by someone, every recommendation was discussed and considered. To this end, we've also prepared and I'll provide separately, a document that presents the rationale behind some of the main aspects of, uh, that most people seem to comment on, those of setback sound and shadow flicker. Those are not the only areas of the draft that were impacted and changed as a result of the comments we received, however. There were over fifty other aspects of the draft that were changed as a result of comments, many of which added clarity to reduce confusion or misunderstanding, in addition to changes of content. The topic of misunderstanding is, is an area we briefly want to touch on. Several general comments received simply said that if the draft were an ordinance, that it would prohibit further wind development in the county, or this would be the most restrictive ordinance in the state, those are quotes. I believe those to be gross misunderstandings and not an accurate perspective of the proposal. The sixteen hundred foot setback to property lines was often cited as one of the main reasons for those statements. Clearly, the authors did not read or consider in their comment that the proposed ordinance also includes a clause that allows a waiver of that setback to a measure of one point one times the height of the turbine. That provides for the means to reduce the setback by at least seventy-one percent. I believe there are few ordinances in Iowa that allow for that kind of setback reduction. I'd also point out that Madison County Wind Ordinance passed in December of twenty-twenty included a one and a half mile setback from property lines of non-participating landowners, clearly ours is not the most restrictive. Likewise, the sound threshold was often cited as too low to allow any turbines. The thresholds in the proposal are based on factual, normal noise areas in a rural area, and those can't be changed, and those two can be changed by waiver. Simply put, the proposal in no way sets out to preclude commercial wind development in the county. It merely establishes the rules and guidelines by which such development shall occur. Guiding principles for the development of details in the proposal began with the concept of protection of property rights of all landowners in the county, coupled with recognition of need for economic development supportive of revenue for essential services, but which is also consistent with the goals and strategies of the county comprehensive development plan. Specifically, we began with the notion that all landowners have a right to enjoyment and use of their property. We recognize that some landowners may or have chosen to give up or sell certain rights on their land, including the rights to be free from effects of commercial, uh, wind turbine. That's evident in the effects language contained in the wind dehumidants, uh, agreements signed by those landowners. It's their privilege to give up or sell those rights, however, that privilege ends at their property line. The rights of adjacent property remain and should not be taken away because a neighbor sold theirs. Nor should a government regulation cause those rights to be infringed upon or taken for the benefit of their neighbor or a commercial entity using that neighbor's property for their own financial gain, unless that property owner also chooses to give up or sell those effects rights. We believe that's a basic principle throughout the United States. It's for that reason that we established the sound, shadow, flicker, and safety setbacks at the property lines. A rationale document goes into that a little bit further. Our belief is that the proposed ordinance is a fair and balanced approach to wind development in the county. It's an ordinance providing guidance on land use specific to commercial wind turbines in the county, and it's consistent with the authorities for county government specified in Iowa Code Chapter three-three-five. It first provides protection for rights and welfare of its citizens, as well as county natural resources and infrastructure. At the same time, it provides for a balanced and consensus approach for continued commercial wind development in the county. The draft we propose is likely not perfect, no ordinance ever is. It is, however, formed on a broad range of considerations and put together as a system of rules that work together to provide what the commission feels is the best possible approach. Certainly, we may learn things not considered as a result of living and using this ordinance. Changes can also, can always be made in the future. However, we urge the board to recognize the huge effort and hundreds of hours and considerations from all stakeholders and pass this draft as presented. If, as, if as part of the supervisor's deliberation and further public comment, there are changes to be considered, we urge the board to reach out to the commission for our perspective. As noted a moment ago, the proposal is written as an integral system, and what may seem like a simple change in one area could have ramifications in others. Lastly, I'd like to thank all that participated and provided input into this process, especially the work of the zoning commission members. They were asked to expend a substantial amount of time and interruption to their normal routines to take on this work in a timely manner, and I want to publicly thank them. I also want to note that at every turn, they tried to set aside their personal feelings and professionally perform their role as commissioners for the good of the county citizens. We have three specific recommendations. Recommendation one, on behalf of the zoning commission and as a result of unanimous, unanimous decision by that commission, I present the draft for an ordinance regulating the construction and operation of commercial wind energy conversion systems in Worth County, and urge your prompt review and approval. Recommendation two, we recommend that the towns and cities in Worth County, if they have concerns of a commercial, uh, energy construction installed in close proximity that could hamper future expansion of city limits, that they pursue those, uh, action on their own to claim extraterritorial rights as may be available via Iowa statutes. We make this recommendation in light of a public comment suggestion that the commission proposes a two-mile setback from city limits for all towns and counties. After consideration of that, of that suggestion, the commission decided that subject was best decided by individual cities versus a blanket requirement across the county. Recommendation three, if the board of supervisors approve an ordinance with sound level thresholds, we recommend that the supervisors consider funding for the county board of health or some other appropriate agency to purchase a sound level measuring device sufficient to be used for, to initially screen sound level complaints associated with turbine operation. The concept is not to use the device or the board of health or the other agencies to adjudicate such complaints, but rather act as an initial screening to determine if a complaint may have a, uh, if a complainant may have a complaint worth pursuing. Facilitating this initial screening could serve to preclude potentially expensive testing from a professional acoustician where noise thresholds are clearly not violated. Thank you, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you have at this time.
Questions for Jeff? Thank you for that, Jeff. We appreciate your guys' uh, donated time to go over all this, and it's very, very appreciated by me. I think you guys did a very thorough job, so. Well, I'm glad you guys stuck it on and went through with it, so thank you.
Who should I send the electronic copy to? Jackie? Okay.
Yeah, why don't you send all of us, I guess, just in case.
Sure.
We have need access, then we can all have it.
Yep.
Well, I guess, uh, we'll definitely have to look at this. I love it's, well, complete draft, I don't have a glance through it all as it's been progressing, so. Um. Well, yeah, you can definitely look through it and, uh, bring that before the board at a future meeting. You guys have any other questions or?
I don't think I have right now.
I just think that, I'd like to thank all of you for, all the hours and time that you stuck in on it. Thank you. Okay, we will, let's this.
Okay.
We're into the board again. Um, so moving on, you personally.
Right, so I wanted to step out of the zoning commission role uh, and speak to you as a private individual in the county with regard to Invenergy, and their claim that any ordinance would not apply to them because of vested rights. First, I believe that their ultimate decision to decline comment on a draft ordinance, after all their platitudes of wanting to work with the county, to come up with a reasonable approach, shows their true perspective. I was quite surprised and disappointed that they chose to provide no review or comment, even though they were asked explicitly to do so. Clearly, they are not concerned about the county or its citizens, otherwise they would have engaged in a discussion of the details. Regardless of their vested rights claim, wouldn't a reasonable approach have been to review and provide feedback to what they knew was the county considerations and concerns? Even if they're convinced that an ordinance would not apply to this project, which I don't believe is the case, wouldn't a reasonable approach have considered future development? Instead, they engaged in continual pressure on the supervisors to sign a separate agreement to bypass an ordinance that they knew to be under consideration. One has to ask why they were so keen on wanting to bypass the county process, even before they're able to show the county what their plans are. Frankly, they've been playing the bully and it seems like deja vu. Second, I want to expose their claim of vested rights and veiled threat of litigation as put forth in a letter to the county from their law firm in early April. They did that as soon as they became aware that the county might consider an ordinance, and the representatives continually claim at every opportunity for discussion. That claim too is a bullying tactic. Frankly, it smacks of intimidation and bluff simply to scare off county government. I do want to note, however, that I believe their project manager, speaking at many meetings, Mark Crowell, is in a very difficult position, and many of the decisions and strategies are dictated far above him. I take him at his word when he says he wants to work with the county. The problem is, he's not the decision maker. As a matter of law, while vested rights is a real legal doctrine, it comes with criteria, and the actual rights are circumstance dependent. Generally, vested rights are granted when an entity has obtained permits for a particular construction that is compliant with the rules in effect at the time of the permit. It provides certain qualified protections for that permit even changes to the rules that may occur between the time the permit was granted and construction being completed. A key component of vested rights that are generally cited and considered by the courts is that the person claiming vested rights must have had substantial construction expense as a result of the permit prior to the rule change, not in a fixed dollar amount, but as a measure of percentage of the project at large. In this instance, Worthwhile Wind has no permits, except for a meteorological tower to conduct a wind study, which it did. Arguably, under current county ordinance, they don't require permits in three quarters of the county, but they do require signed agreements with the county, which they don't have. And if the proposed ordinance is passed, each turbine would require a permit. Further, since each turbine is a separate construction and would be permitted individually, the substantial expense threshold would be applied to the, to the construction of each turbine and not the project at large. Except for two concrete bases they installed for tax purposes last year, they've not begun construction at all. In fact, they're still in design, as is their response every time they're asked for a plan or overlay. And while it's recognized that planning and design does have expense, and it may be a big figure, planning and design prior to permits is purely speculative and does not count as substantial expense of construction. Even if it were to be considered in the substantial cost criteria, which it should not, as a percentage of the total cost for construction to operational state, the planning and design number would be a small fraction of the whole, and therefore not meet a substantial threshold. This is our county, and we want to work with reasonable development under rules that make sense for the county and our citizens. We should not succumb to bullies or their threats. We have a legal right to our ordinances, and they have a duty to respond and work with the county, not attempt to overrun us. I was truly disappointed when they completely ignored the opportunity to engage in conversation around the details of our draft ordinance. In my mind, they forfeit, they forfeited any graciousness on the part of the county when they took that approach. What I've stated here regarding vested rights doctrine in Iowa is not my opinion alone, nor based solely on my reading of statutes and case law. I took our county attorney at his word when he said several times that he's not an expert in these matters and feels unqualified to advise on. So at my own expense, I retained an attorney that does have expertise in these matters from Dickinson Law Firm, a major law firm in Des Moines, and I posed the question to him regarding vested rights in Iowa. I submit that legal opinion in the form of a letter from him to the board of supervisors and county attorney. You'll see that what I've stated is consistent with the legal opinion of that attorney and his review of law in Iowa related to vested rights claim. I would also note that beyond the one court case cited in the Dickinson Law Firm letter, there are a multitude of other court cases that ruled in similar fashion and applied the same criteria. In closing, I know that commercial wind development is an important tax revenue for the county, and I've never suggested it be shut down. And to be clear, I'm not doing so now either. I believe that the proposed ordinance submitted by the zoning commission is a fair, objective, and balanced approach that allows such development in a manner that protects the rights and allows for reasonable development consistent with county development plan and desires of the supervisors. My beef is in the manner that Invenergy is approaching this. It would be nice if Invenergy approached the situation in the same reasonable vein as the zoning commission has taken. Clearly, they've not chosen to do so, and I encourage the supervisors to recognize the demeaning and bullying way they've been treating you in particular and a county at large. I urge you to pass the ordinance in a timely manner and enforce it by ignoring these baseless and bullying claims of vested rights of Invenergy. It is their responsibility to prove in court that they have such rights. It is not the requirement of the county to prove that they do not. We merely need to enforce the ordinance that you may be, that you may pass. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. This is a copy of my comments attached with a copy of the letter from, uh, the Dickinson Law Firm.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff?
You guys have any questions? We're doing, yeah, thank you, appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, Jeff.
Cobra Plan approval.
Just like everything else, um, Cobra's gotten a little more technical, so, um. Cobra's gotten a little more technical, so, um. Group benefit partners, that's another thing that they, um, oh, I, ISA, they've lined up so that, um, we have somebody that's gonna. Take care of paperwork and whatever for anybody that needs to be offered Cobra. What is it? Yeah, the co- admin cost is gonna be fifty cents per person per year. So, yeah, so it just another thing that covers us. There's just something else that covers us. I know we don't have that many in a year, but. It just makes sure that if there's law changes or anything else, things are being done, right? And we have enough of that, so.
This is an option for everybody, it's just whether you take it or not, right?
Yeah, you can, you can take it. For so many months and if you deny Cobra, then you just sign off. So we need a motion to approve. Cobra. Plan.
There's two or three different places to sign.
Your second?
I'll second that motion.
Any questions or concerns with it? Hearing none, all favor I. Pose. Motion carries. Think I got them. Alrighty. This is the year twenty one, twenty two budget appropriation.
Yeah, new year kind of smoked up on me. We have to have these approved before we can start spending money on. Thursday. Yeah, having school when we have it did not help. Yeah, so I'm gonna have to get on top of it because we're gonna do the same thing next year. But then you have more time for taxes, so. And that's just basically what was approved in the budget in March.
Basically, we're approving to spend the budget we approved, right?
Pretty much.
So I think a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dot oh six that two eight, which is the budget appropriations for fiscal year twenty one and twenty two.
I'll make that motion.
Hearing none, roll call vote, maybe. Lower. Stone. Fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budgetary transfer.
So, keeping up with the. The transfers were also on the budget that was approved and this just. Basically gives blessing on, I want to make the transfers. When it works, like when we get taxes in.
Alright, so we want to do approve the resolution twenty twenty one dot oh six that two eight that oh one. The interfund operating transfers. Your second?
I'll second it.
Hearing none, a roll call vote, lower. Sweetie. Stone.
And then the last one, so that everybody still wants to work here, starting on Thursday, is pay. Joel probably hang around, but I don't know about anybody else.
Alright, so I'll take a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty one salary resolution.
I'll make that a motion.
Right, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, lower. I, sweetie. Stone.
I did not talk to Brian yet. But I did hear this weekend, um, the nice gentle rain coming through the back again, so that was nice.
It was all going somewhere.
Not to cut Brian out of it, because he, I, it was me that suggested that we go take a look at it. Is there somebody else that might take a look at this?
I've had other people look and it just, I don't know what to do.
It's been too long.
That could have happened twenty years ago, probably.
Yeah, when you didn't hear it. Now, since you've heard it, you've heard it for quite a few years.
I mean, I was there one day when you get the water running down between the walls, so.
I mean, we got three girls or three ladies in there working in that mess. Especially the reporter where they really hear it. Because I'd say that's the worst spot, right? It's just a thought.
If you guys know somebody that'll come and it's.
Take a look at it, I.
That's a very big thing too, is everybody's so busy.
And you can get somebody to fix it, you're looking well in the future.
And how much money do you put into?
You can't, you can't leave employees in this situation.
Right.
I mean, it's been going on for too many years.
Try to find some sort of band-aid if you can.
We had somebody try in the van, but then he ended up getting.
Yeah, no, it's, anybody can do the patching or repair job, it's just. They're all, all contractors are pretty busy from. So patience, I guess, is the thing to wait for.
And it's hard to get a bid because you'd probably have to open it up to be able to know what the heck.
You don't know what you're gonna run into.
You're never, you can't just patch it and match either, it's just, you know, that's impossible, so.
Looking for new brick or anything like that, that's specialized too, so.
Last time he was here, looked at it, I think it's pretty hard to find any of this brick.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what he said.
This guy from Winnipeg, that's doing Winnipeg? What was his name?
I know when we were here, he said, well, a lot of that is almost impossible to find, and all, some of the window seals and stuff, you know, are all pretty well eroded. And he said, no, I think he found us one or two at that time and replaced a couple of those big stones. But they were already partially wore, they weren't brand new, new stock, new used stock. But the brick is even harder, I think.
He's worked at the Chargers office too.
Yeah, he's done, done stuff there and. You just.
I know he's good.
Running on a Band-Aid, you just can't find replacement parts for some of this, so.
Look at an old church or something, maybe.
Well, and I don't know if you want these bricks because they're porous and they're pop, they're getting water in them and they're. On and freezing and all that good stuff.
Probably needed to bend, uh, if you seal them or what you can do. I don't know nothing.
Alright, we'll keep her there for now.
Patience.
What was that called?
Morning. Um, I just had a couple of questions. We've had some more phone calls regarding the casino interchange. And so I, um, one of them had a question on the restricted uses. And, um, in number two of the restricted uses, it lists explosives. And he is interested in putting a brick and mortar building out there for fireworks. And is concerned that fireworks is considered explosive. I did call Jeff and he, in his opinion, um, fireworks was not considered an explosive. But he suggested that the board get another, um. Another opinion from a different attorney of your choosing. So if you could just let me know how to, um, follow up with that prospect, that would be great. And we can talk about it at my board meeting too, I just wanted to get everything out there. Um, then the other thing that I was, I've had some questions about exactly where the hookups are. So I've asked Jason to provide me with kind of like a utility map so I can show everybody. Depending on what lot that they're interested in, exactly where the hookup is, so they can lay out their, their building for their investors. And then I thought, well, um, we should probably get a sign out there, so I'm getting some quotes together, not saying that we have to go forward. With any of that and I can provide some quotes at the next exec board meeting. And then finally, I'm gonna be gone next Monday, I'm gonna take a little vacation, but I'll be back on Tuesday or Wednesday next week.
Sounds good, I'll, uh, maybe I'll send an email to. Uh, David Joe's attorney that we worked with on this. And, uh. Give his opinion on it because they, they kinda. Yeah, they set the covenants more or less and we'll just see. I don't think it would be because I think it was last year they released out part of their parking lot.
Or is that why they don't want explosives so that they can?
And that, that's just somebody leasing their lot, so I don't know if it's, you know, either way, you're gonna get people to stop there because of fireworks. And that's what they're after, to get people to stop.
But they're making money off of that.
Yeah, true, true.
Soon they do, I mean, they look.
I think if it would have been fireworks, it may have would have been spelled out that, but. All email given.
If you do find one way or another, that prospect should probably have it written in writing so he could take it to his board. And show that I followed up with that. And the last one I forgot to ask, um, have we made any process, progress on hookup fees? Because that's the other prospect was wondering about.
Oh, I'll work on that too, because I know we looked at it here, just not that long ago I saw it, but. But I'll, I'll get with Jason on that too, because, um.
Because that probably goes hand in hand with rot, water and wastewater.
Yeah, those rates too, so, I know we're working on new rates. Um, so yeah, I'll, I'll get that, I'll, I'll work on that for you too, so. Alrighty?
Sounds good.
No, that's just, I got the same call and was, um, appreciate her working on that last week and. Guys are interested in putting a building out there at least and I'm not sure if they have more than just the thought of fireworks, you know. So it's, it's a great option if we can make it work, I think.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Uh, people service, Chris.
Thank you for your report. If you have any questions. Heard back from, reached from Kivya out there. Water tower. A week ago, and he said he had emailed the person that did the inspection, wanted a report and he hadn't gotten it yet.
Yeah, I know we've been working on water rates, so we'll come together here soon. We can meet with everybody out there, discuss that.
Yeah.
Be real short relief. That's it, everything else, but we're working alright out there.
I was with the salt Brian tank, but we're just using more salt because it won't shut off when it's supposed to. But sucks more Brian than it's supposed to, we ordered, he was there. A week ago Friday, and I was on vacation and he didn't call me. An email, sent me email on Monday and told me what was wrong, I said, well, did you order parts? Well, I didn't know if I should, like, well.
Yeah, it's broke, we need to fix it.
Parts were on Monday, he said it should be here this week, like Monday, Tuesday, tomorrow, so.
Okay, sounds good, so. Alright, do you have any questions for Chris? Okay, thanks, sir. Department head discussion. Been here the last week.
Our first three days of kind of, our plan went pretty smooth, so. After the safety meeting, you and I are gonna meet again and discuss the next steps for going forward, so.
Only thing I have is I talked to Kevin Springer and I'm trying to get a second contractor. We've got a crack in our driveway out there that's a trip hazard plus going into our door, um, they think they can grind that down and fill it.
Well, so shifted.
Yeah, well, it's cracked and shifted up and, yeah. And then our back steel door is, we can't adjust it anymore, it's swollen up so much with the water behind it. That we're having to beat it in to make the door open, so I'm getting a quote on that too.
It just keeps compounding. Typical building. Everything you do, doors that open shut, so. Teresa was asking out here, how many surveys we've gotten, we heard a number lately. And then we had.
Eighty some of them.
That first week, right?
Eighty-three or something like that.
Hopefully there are eighty-three new ones, not, you know, people that didn't participate, who knows?
That might be difficult. Well, and that's fine. Give me as much feedback as possible.
Absolutely, that was in the paper last week too. So that may have helped, uh. Get some attention, so. Ready, any department heads? Leaving you, Joe. Move on, supervisor weekly.
I had EMA and they went through the budget. The WCD grant for ten thousand came through with the two radios and a cell phone booster for the trailer. Uh, they decided to give a hundred dollars for a website to get it going for the. Long-term disaster recovery program. They have not heard back from the Kansas Community Center yet. And, uh. Biggest deal was at the fair, the antenna on the trailer came down. So we had no. We couldn't, we couldn't look at anything. And we needed, when we discussed for quite a while, the fact we need to get a backup of some type on that. So, other than that, and after that was nine one one, the new nine one one system's been installed. Uh, the signage for Realwood Court out there and the windmills, windmill signs have been put up. Because they've got all of that, they discussed the. IPAC grants. Uh, they reviewed the budget. And, uh. One of the things I guess it changed with the auditors that was here, because Marilyn Stainers now has to submit claims each month to get paid. Because they, the way they was being done, the auditors didn't like it, I guess, right? So now we gotta do, so you'll see that come through on her as far as claims go. Other than that, the job that Marilyn's doing, pretty much according to the board, is fantastic. They're really impressed with, she's on top of it.
You don't mess with her in those signs.
What's that?
You don't mess with her in those signs, she's getting my little sides, the street signs, they're all.
She's really on top of her job, she does a great job. Yeah, and she keeps us, we have to be like. At a certain percentage to get these, some of this stuff too, and she keeps us always there or above, so. Uh, the other thing I had was a second judicial district. Uh, they went through the twenty-two budget. They approved different contracts with two percent increases for people. Uh, they did show the three ways that they were gonna use their funds for the American Rescue Plan money. Uh, one of them was the fact that they gave everybody a five hundred dollar hazardous duty pay for that period. And they're adding three new probation parole officers for twenty-two. Into it because they've got, they just felt they needed more coverage that way. So, that's about it there. So, that's about it there.
Yeah, it seems everybody's getting a lot more probation these days than actually going to jail, so. There's gonna be more probation officers.
And, yeah, they, that's one of the things that they really pushed is, in the state of Iowa, is doing more probation and getting them back into the workforce and making productive citizens out of them. Then putting them in jails for periods of time where they don't, it doesn't do any good whatsoever. You can't do that with everybody, but if their, if their capability is there to do that, that's the way it's about to go, so.
I actually had no meetings, I did have a couple, I had one guy stop me here, a private person, and asked about, um, he's got a concern about a acreage with a lot of cars starting to pile up, or, or they're along one-on-five, and which would be in the zoned area, and I don't know. I mean, I don't think it's like a registered junkyard or car yard or anything, you know?
Just a lot of cars.
Just a lot of cars, I, I mean, I ran it by Jeff, you know, and he said he didn't really know much about it, I mean, we've talked to Zonia, it was gonna be next week, Jeff, but forgot about it, till now. Um, I don't know if there's anything in the zoning laws that would allow us to stop that, or, you know, or.
Yeah.
I, I don't.
About there's a, yeah.
I don't see it is, I mean, he's got him on the backside of his property, I mean, I get it, I don't know what he's doing with them all, but, you know, it's just sort of this, so.
Right.
And, uh, so, it was just a question that came up, and he wasn't really questioning zoning, I was just thinking, wonder how zoning worked on it? If it did, it'd probably be some kind of, something.
Matt can look at it, yeah.
And then the other thing, we mentioned that one junkyard up in Silver Lake area there, I did drive by there, I don't know if you have or not.
I did.
There is a truck sitting there with some kind of grinder.
Time I went by, that great big long truck was sitting there.
I mean, I couldn't see the tires or anything piled up, I mean, it looks about like it did on Beacon when they were looking at it, but, uh, they obviously are gonna do something up there, I would say, so.
Is that really, are they out of the right of way?
No.
No. Trucks that's right in a ditch, that's right.
Well, that is on his side of the fence, I think.
Moved it then.
Well, it was this past week. There was like six or eight of those plastic totes, those white chemical totes, sitting in the right of way again, Rich.
Sure. Combine's still there, is that?
That's gone, he cleaned up that first round we talked about.
It just seemed like not long after, I, maybe it was, maybe it's longer than I thought, no, but I remember last time I drove it, there was a combine there, the totes were there.
Yeah, the totes are there, but I think the combine was gone.
And then it looked like there was a truck parked there, but I didn't know if it was parked there for the day, and.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure it was actually inside the property line when I went. I mean, so.
They did move it, yeah. Yeah, I, just because it parked it there, I'm going by it within a second.
I might have dropped it off, the gate was like that big, you know, and so, I'm just curious, you know? It's not that, I mean, it's more of an issue in the wintertime, but, I mean, there's, they shouldn't be there. If I want this, I'm like anybody else, we've done this road before, the dairy thing and stuff, too, you know, trying to keep that. It's, you know, how much money do we wanna fight to spend?
Well, to keep the crap out of the right of ways.
That's fine, yeah, I mean, we can't say anything on that, but it's.
And, you know, if we want, I guess we can ask Dan to issue tickets or something, but. We went and talked to him already twice.
Okay, thank you. That's not working, apparently. Well, something to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did see that when I was, like, over there, and, so, they must have some kind of plan, so, but that's all I had, man.
Okay.
Part of the week.
I had, uh, care connections, Northern Iowa. Um. We signed, or approved all of our contracts for all of our service providers in the area, um, throughout our whole region, so, uh, we should have coverage of most everything that needs to be, um, and we were grabbing, grabbing a few more things with children's uh, mental health now, because the state, that takes effect until July first, so. Uh, we do have some access for that now, and, and a couple of providers that are offering services for that, so. Got a few more to go through, I think, uh, next month, but, uh, otherwise, yeah, we did get all that stuff, so.
Did the state give us funding ability for the children's stuff, or?
That's part of their, the money that they're giving us in order to provide these services, but they're, you know, like, they're giving us basically half this year, and then next year it's completely off the tax roll, so, it's all on, uh, the state income tax, so.
Right.
So, yeah, um, that's why we went ahead and moved forward with it, because they're actually funding it now, so.
Okay.
That's kind of the big hole, we know, everybody knows we need to, to do that, but it's just sort of thing where the state always tries to push more on you, and, and doesn't ever give you any money for it, so. Everybody's been kind of just holding firm on it, when, when it finally maybe worked, I guess, we'll see how it goes in the next few years, but. So, I learned that everybody's doing good over there, they're busy, and.
If they get people hired for their rapid responses, we'll start July first.
Uh. No, they're still looking for people, um, and they are gonna push on that more right now, I know, because, uh, it, it sounds like the, the list of people that can actually participate or be a part of that rapid responses is fairly flexible. Um, so what they're trying to do is trying to find people for each area, you know, more than one, if they can get four or five people, certain areas, whether it's county or within a county or so, you know, to do that, but that's something that they're still working on, but it's, yeah. Yeah, they're trying to just, trouble people is the biggest thing, so. Otherwise, that's all I have last week, so. Hey, well. See, our, we got an invite to the Joyce Community Center. In the library, yeah, I'd like to go look at it, so. We did help, was, contributed enough to get those guys a pretty good grant down there, so. Guys will take a look at it anyways. So the next one will be.
Probably go on that week, but I, I have toured.
Have you been there?
Yeah, I, I got a personal tour from the librarian, actually, one day, so it was kind of nice to see that, because very well finished it. I don't think she had her shelves up and stuff in the library, but, uh, and I know the community center's been used once already for sure for graduations.
Yeah.
Town says pretty proud of it, so.
Good, there. Well, they put a lot of work and.
They did.
Money into it, so. Other than that, uh, I don't think there's anything else that will be at otherwise, so. Yeah, I'll take a motion to here.
I'll make a motion to you.
I'll second it. Alright, don't be right. Me, sir, thank you.